This meeting is in video game. Anyone who does not really see on television will be skewed. This will be shown like on channel nine every week. It's on eight, nine P M. Wednesday at seven P M. Friday at ten P M. Saturday at ten P M. And it continues for the next meeting. We need to remind you to review that link this week on the agenda. Please rise for the courage of the people. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Council Vice President Brown?
Here.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Here.
Councilman Yerkes?
Present.
Council President DeBorrello?
Here.
Mayor Della Pia?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Rooney?
Present.
Presentations. On the agenda, there is a recognition of a local author, Lenny Mack. He will not be attending tonight. We will reschedule that for a future meeting. For the bill list, can I have a motion to approve the list for November 12th, 2025?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Joe, seconded by Jack. All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for October 22nd, 2025, the special meeting minutes for October 28th, and the November 5th special meeting? Do I have a motion for approval? Motion by Councilman Yerkes?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Harris. All those in favor? Oh, roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBorrello?
Yes.
Motion, or, yeah, carries. Ordinances. Ordinance 23 dash 25. Ordinance of the Township of Washington authorizing a five-year tax exemption and abatement agreement between the Township of Washington and Castile properties LLC. This ordinance is for introduction only. Public hearing and adoption will take place on the December 3rd. Can I have a motion to introduce ordinance 23-2025?
Motion.
Motion. Motion by Councilman Harris, seconded by Councilman Yerkes. Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBorrello?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-25. Ordinance amending chapter 229 of the Code of Township of Washington entitled Taxes. This ordinance is also for introduction only. Public hearing and adoption will take place on December 3rd. Can I have a motion to introduce ordinance 24-25? Motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Yerkes, seconded by Councilman Harris. Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBorrello?
Yes.
Moving on to resolutions. Want me to read? I'll read. Got a lot. Resolutions. Resolution 278-25. First off, does anybody need anything removed and read separately? No? Moving on. Resolution 278-2025. Resolution authorizing the renewal of a cooperative contract purchasing system with Camden County Educational Service Commission for the Township of Washington, County of Gloucester, State of New Jersey. Resolution 279-25. Resolution authorizing the township to solicit bids for snow plowing services for the 2025-2026 season. Resolution 280-25. Resolution authorizing the municipal court to request for proposals for conflict prosecutor of the Township of Washington. Resolution 281-2025. Resolution appointing a member to the Washington Township Municipal Utilities Authority. Resolution 282. Resolution approving large gathering application for St. John's Church of Turnersville Incorporated. Resolution 283-2025. Resolution accepting safety and stabilization bond and inspection escrow from SUP Two Mill Pond Village LLC located at 382 Egg Harbor Road, Sulu, New Jersey, block 194, point 12, lot 7, escrow number 0129, and a project number is listed. Resolution 284. Resolution requesting approval of revenue and appropriations from the state of New Jersey for New Jersey Historical Commission, any amount of $2,100. Resolution 285. Resolution requesting approval of revenue and appropriations from the state of New Jersey for New Jersey Council on Arts in the amount of $2,800. Resolution 286-25. Resolution authorizing refund of tax overpayments. Resolution 287-25. Resolution canceling taxes for Joseph John, a totally disabled veteran in block 198.03, lot 28, 16 Elizabeth Court. Resolution 288-25. Resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran, block 192.12, lot 19, 14 Bedford Terrace. Resolution 289-25. Resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran, block 190.10, lot 9, 5 Meadow View Drive, effective September 12th. Resolution 290-2025. Resolution canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran, block 82.52, lot 21, 29 Hartford Road, effective October 14th. And finally, resolution 291-25. Canceling taxes for a totally disabled veteran, block 109.02, lot 4, 27 Longwood Drive, effective October 16th. And I have a motion to approve resolutions 278-25 to 291-25.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Harris, seconded by Councilman Yerkes. Roll call.
Councilman Yerkes?
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pascalone?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Council President DeBorrello?
Yes.
Moving on to old business, new business, and reports. Councilman Harris?
Nothing to report at this time.
Councilman Yerkes?
Thank you. We had a very busy week celebrating Veterans Day. A lot of us attended. I know Saturday, we were at the Washington Lake Auditorium, the Tri-State Veterans Association, along with the Knights of Columbus, at a holy family sponsored. A nice event attended by the mayor and council president, DeBorrello, myself. We had a nice, very nice gathering, and this was good. Beautiful weather. Got swarmed by some ladybugs and bees, but other than that, we survived. Then we had Veterans Day yesterday. Unfortunately, had to be moved into the performing arts auditorium at the high school because of the high winds and the chill. And a lot of our veterans are older, and we don't want to subject them to the unreasonable weather. And a very nice attendance by mayor, myself, and council president, DeBorrello, and other members of our staff, our chiefs of fire department and police, and very nice tribute to the veterans who are out there. And we all salute you for the services that you provided our country in securing our freedom. And then last night, I want to give a shout out to DJ Bob Pantano. He gave us an event for the Tri-State Veterans Association at Delphi's Restaurant. Food, dancing, good camaraderie. We had veterans from other states, Delaware, Pennsylvania, attend, and it was good to see a lot of people out there supporting this worthy cause for the PST, PSDT, PTSD, which, again, we're just learning so much more about this horrible affliction to our veterans who are returning home. But thanks to everyone who came out last night to attend and support that worthy cause. And Frank Alexander, special shout out to him, and Al, Rattali, yes, and the Knights of Columbus. They did a wonderful job in supporting that and organizing it. And look forward to bigger and better events next year for the veterans.
That's it. Mr. Rooney?
Nothing to report, Mr. Council Vice President. Thank you.
Mr. Russo? Councilwoman Pascalone? Hold on. Try that again.
I said none at this time, and you don't want to hear me coughing over the phone, anyway.
Yes. Sorry, you're under the weather. Council President DeBorrello?
Thank you so much. Well, I kind of echo what Council Yerkes, Councilman Yerkes was saying, that we had some really beautiful events for veterans. Thank you for everyone who came out. Thank you to all our veterans. Really, we had a beautiful breakfast this morning at Bell School, so the kids put together a bunch of veterans and their families that came, and they sang, and they had a breakfast for the veterans this morning they got to attend with Chief Gersick. So beautiful event. Mayor and I also went to an event. I'll let you tell you, you know, let him tell you about the event, the second event we went to today. So thank you so much to everybody. It really has been a busy couple of weeks, and a lot of great things coming up in December. A lot of our developments have little events going on for the holiday season, so please, you know, check out, check those events out. Really great events. Holiday season coming. If anybody needs food for Thanksgiving, please reach out. Please let us know. Let us get you what you need. We're here for that. I think that our food bank is now getting more food in after some of the things that have been going on. But if there's anybody needing anything, please just reach out and let us know. That's all I have.
Mayor Della Pia?
Thank you, Council Vice President. First, I want to say thank you to everyone. Halloween was a success. It was safe, and I believe everybody had a good time, so it's good to have an event like that with no issues. As Council President DeBorrello said, we attended Jefferson Hospital today. We had a resident reach out, and they were very touched by the service that her mother got under the care. So we went over, we recognized some of the nurses and doctors and nutritionists and stuff over at Jefferson. So it was nice to see them get a thank you and being recognized for doing a good job over there. Veterans Day, I want to thank the Washington Township Veteran Advisory Board and the Tri-State Veterans Memorial Fund for putting on two ceremonies. It's the least we can do for our veterans to say thank you for what they have given up for us. I attended 101st birthday for a resident. Her name was Winnie. Had the pleasure of going there last year to celebrate 100 with her, and I told her I looked forward to 102 with her. So it was, it was great to go there. And then just look up to, look forward to a couple of things going on. Follow our website. We have the Christmas light contest that will be going on. We're going to have flyers going out soon to sign up if you want to participate in that. We have the Christmas tree lighting, which is in December. This year, I want to do something a little different. Usually, the mayor lights the tree. I don't think people want to see me light the tree, so I'm going to do a contest where I'm going to walk around, and I'm going to find a family that has, you know, a little magic or a little Christmas spirit, and I'm going to let some kids come up and light the tree. So I'm going to promote that and try to make it a little more fun, a little bit more special for a different family every year. As Council President said, this time of year, getting tough on people with food. Thanksgiving, our police does a fun drive. This year, it's Wednesday and Thursday, November 19th and 20th at Patino's. If you're out and about, or if you can plan to go out that night, one item, two items, whatever you can give is always great. There's some local businesses doing meals on Thanksgiving at the Senior Center. So if you know anybody who celebrates Thanksgiving by themselves, sometimes just sending a meal and letting them eat by themselves isn't enough. They're more than welcome to go there. It's a free meal. It's a hot meal. We'll be sharing all this on our website, so you can get information out to everybody. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
From my report, from the library, they have on November 21st, between 3:00 and 4:00 P M., the Rambling Readers Walking Book Group. Any book lovers, meet librarian Jen at Washington Lake Park for leisurely stroll through the park while we discuss the latest read. This weekend, there is a gentleman who served in World War II. I think he's 102? Might be 102. Yeah, Sal. Okay. He will be, actually, this gentleman, I don't think it's Sal. Yeah, he's, his birthday is like a weekly. I can't remember his name. He will be there. Check their website. I've announced this before, but if you're going to attend, you have to RSVP. There will be no walk-ins. Huh? I thought it was the 12th. The 8th? Okay. My bad. I'm sorry. But the Rambling Readers Walking Book Group is this weekend, or November 21st. I want to thank Chief Gersick and all those who participated in the veteran ceremony. Unable to attend, but I also want to thank Chief Gersick and his department for the apprehension of the one gentleman involved with the auto theft. Great job to them, and hopefully that limits the amount of auto thefts that are happening in town, and we can move on. Moving on.
Actually, Council Vice President, if you don't mind, I do want to add something.
Sure.
Yeah, if you don't mind. So last night's event was wonderful. I was there last night, and a big shout out to everyone who helped run the event. But I also want to acknowledge another event that's coming up, November 22nd, to Washington Lake Park. It's Cars and Coffee, it benefits Toys for Tots. My friend, Lenny Antonelli, is one of the people that are running that event. So it's November 22nd at 9:00 A M. to 12:00 P M. There's going to be some really nice cars there. There'll be people enjoying coffee and good conversation, and they ask for everyone to bring a toy for some needy children. So again, that's November 22nd at Washington Lake Park at 9:00 A M.
Mayor?
I want to remind everybody too, between all my little chicken scratch, I've missed something. Our football team is undefeated. They won the first two playoff games. This Friday is a big game. I believe if they win this week, they play at the Meadowlands next week. Is that correct? So if you can get out Friday night, I believe it's 6:00 o'clock at the high school, come out, support our football team, and let's cheer them on to victory. Thank you.
With nothing else, moving on. The municipal complex will be closed Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th, in observance for Thanksgiving holiday. Mark your calendar for the Township Christmas tree lighting, as the mayor elaborated. Lighting and Winter Village, it will be held on December 5th, beginning at 5:30 P M. In Washington Lake Park. There will be vendors, Hot Chocolate, and Santa and Mrs. Claus will light the Christmas tree. I guess we're not going to have them light the Christmas tree? Says Santa and Mr. Claus will light the Christmas tree, so you're going to go? Okay. So come out and join the fun. We have a note in here, the vehicle theft is on the rise, but thankfully, due to our police department, some of that has been curbed. But still, please be sure to lock your car, car doors every night, and take your key fobs inside your house with you. If you suspect suspicious activity, please contact the police. That's something that we need to make sure that we call them right away, not delay, so that they can get officers out there and catch it when it's happening. Please visit our website for information and updates regarding the new trash and recycling collection process effective June 30th. Remember, yard waste is on a new program starting November 1st. We have to call and schedule for the yard waste pickup. Bogarty-Hagan Library offers many events. Please check their website for information on Hagan happenings. All dogs in the township are required to be registered and vaccinated. Please stop in the clerk's office to register your dog. Public participation. Please follow the public decorum posted, which has been attached to the public agenda, and limit your comments to five minutes. Once you have completed your comments or questions, the council president will then ask if any member of the governing body, who are they designee, wishes to address your questions or comments. Can I have a motion to open to public participation?
Motion.
Seconded by, first, motion by Councilman Harris, seconded by Councilman Yerkes. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
I'm assuming you were a yes. You're a little delayed.
Yes, sorry.
We are open to the public. Anybody wishing to comment, come up to the podium, state your name, address.
You're on, Maxine, you're on camera.
Couldn't they take me off? They always say they can take you off. Okay. Anyway, Maxine Kangelos, 911 Whitman Drive, Turnersville. I did attend the veteran ceremony yesterday. Was it yesterday? Okay. And I, personally, I was appalled at a township of 50,000-plus people. And if there were 100 spectators, that's saying a lot, and I think that was really sad. I don't know if people were misdirected because, you know, you had to make the change to the location, but maybe, you know, council should think about changing it permanently on Veterans Day to the high school, because you're prone to inclement weather. You don't know. You know, it really shouldn't be, you know, an outside affair, you know, at that time of the year. I mean, one of the speakers, you know, said she went to three different places. Yep. And I was a little, you know, sad and just, you know, that nobody was there. I could not believe, some people couldn't spend an hour and a half of their day.
Sorry. I don't know who made the decision to move it around, but that's not our decision. We don't host it. I don't know if it's the advisory board. The Veterans Advisory Board.
Is that a good idea to throw at them?
Well, I mean, the council liaison.
Okay.
And that decision was made by the president of the board. I will bring it up next meeting, see if we can do Veterans Day in November, which will be possibly bringing training, some of the reading, or we can make a permanent commission on education.
Yeah, I think you would have more attendance, you know. I mean, people wouldn't even come out of their house yesterday. Yep, yep. All right, that's all I, you know, I really, it was a beautiful affair. It was very nice, and it was, you know, really heartrending, but it just, I felt bad that there was nobody there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Maxine.
Hello. My name is William Serwa. 31 Ella Street, Haddonfield, New Jersey, apartment 1.
I'm sorry, can you pull the mic closer?
Yes, sure, sorry. Can I hold it?
Sure.
Okay. My name is William Serwa. I am from 31 Ella Street in Haddonfield, New Jersey. I'm the CEO and founder of a locally-owned, family-run dispensary. We have our first store in Mount Ephraim. We are very involved with our community. We love giving back to our township. My wife here actually heads our community outreach department. We do a lot within our town and a lot in our neighboring towns. I'm here tonight just to show face, and I understand that there's potentially three resolutions. I understand two are out there, and you've currently paused the decision on whether or not to give out the third. I do have a little handout just about who we are and what we're doing, and I'd love to just pass it around so you can get a sense of who we are. Oh, thank you so much. But we are here because we just want to talk about how involved we are. I know we only have five minutes, so I'll let you kind of read about what we do, but we have identified a really good property within Washington Township. We think it's far enough away from the other dispensaries. It meets all the ordinance within the town. I know there's one concern, and I actually spoke with the gentleman who is the zoning officer. He agrees that the property is phenomenal place for this. It's got all the necessary requirements, you know, drive-through, vault, ample parking. We understand that there's an ordinance that has to be a, sorry, one mile or 5,000 feet away from another dispensary. Now, there is one across the road. The proposed property is the old TD Bank. I know that the Botanist is across the street. However, they are a big MSO. They're not from here. They don't care about this place. They also sell their own product, which is notoriously known for being pretty subpar. What we do is we work with a lot of local craft growers, so our menu is completely different. It's almost like putting a farm-to-table restaurant next to a fast-food chain, so we're completely different. Our customer service is way better. You can see our reviews from our current store. We have zero compliance issues with the state. We are very compliant, but more than that, we just give back to our community a lot, and we've only been open a year, and we've done a whole lot for our community. They've given back to us, and we're fortunate enough to be able to expand, so we're looking for our second home. I, you know, would love to speak with you guys more about the potential of obtaining that third resolution. And I just, you know, I think that we would be a great benefit to Washington Township and all the programs. We currently work with a couple of businesses already here. We have a lot of our personal stuff here as well, but I just think we would be a great benefit to the town, and I would love the chance to talk to you more about what we plan to do and if we were to given that opportunity. So, thank you. I don't know if you have questions or not, or if we're allowed to do that.
Well, I think we have your literature. We need some time to take a look at it. And if we have any questions, we will certainly reach out to you or one of our representatives.
Okay. Do you know when you guys will decide on if the third resolution will be given out?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. Well, keep me posted. Please keep us in mind, and we'd love to be part of the Washington Township community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does your wife have anything she want to add?
Oh, yeah.
Sure. Sure, I would love to. I would love to. Well, if you, yes, if you look at the second page, I do head our community outreach and a lot of our marketing. We work really hard to bring clients to Mount Ephraim. It's a very small, little slice of land, but we've invested a lot into the community, and the reason majorly that we are able to expand is because they've invested back in us, which is awesome. Even coming here tonight, I see all of the things that you put into your community. I love the idea about letting a family, you know, light the Christmas tree. That's the special things we look for when we look into moving into a community and we find a second home. We want to be a place we can be a part of. I work really, really closely with our celebration committee. We find ways we can help our community. We are cannabis, so we do have to be a little bit careful with what we do. We participate in all of the over-21 events that benefit anything in our community. We can do beef and beers and things like that, so we get involved on that level. We sponsor Fall Fest. We sponsor things for the Fourth of July Parade. Anywhere that I can get involved in that community, the three ladies that run our celebration committee know they can always call me. They've sat for hours in our back office, and we've kind of brainstormed how we can, you know, work within our community to build the footprint. We've marched in the Pride Parade for Haddon Township, so we also look at the communities that support our business and the footprint everywhere. I do think one of the things that Will mentioned, that my husband mentioned, that makes us special, being across the street from something like the Botanist, is that you're offering your residents that local place that they are not getting with the service that's already there. And I do believe that the Botanist is in a different township. Is that correct?
It's in one of our townships.
Right. So the consideration there for that location would be that it gives your residents a place where you're getting the tax money and not another township. And we put ourselves in a position where people want to come and support us. And I would love to answer a million things about what we do if you have any other questions, but, yeah. So we're very community-driven. It's one of our big pillars. You can see on the front page, it's my husband, his brother, and his mom and dad, who they are currently in our stores all the time to roll and greet people at the door. His mom is always in the back with us. His brother comes in. So it's a very family-friendly place. To me, cannabis does initiate a platform for connection. It gives us, you know, a way to have community, like you said about veterans and PTSD. We find research all the time. Cannabis helps PTSD immensely, and we're big on education. We have a veteran that comes to our store every single day. His name is Mr. Charles, and he's increasingly getting older, and, but we help him every day, and we've always told him, you know, we can deliver to you, but he wants to come and be part of our community. We're part of his social calendar. So that's the type of vibe you're going to get from us, and I know you're on pause with[1726.83] And I know you're on pause with it, but if you're going to consider a location and a group, I would, we would love to be one of them.
And your current store is in Haddonfield?
It's in Mount Ephraim.
Oh, Mount Ephraim, okay.
Yes. Any other questions? Yes. Yes. So we are working to get involved with veteran groups. We have tons of veterans that come to our store. We offer them a discount. I would love to set up, and it's going to take a lot of manpower and working with our communities. It's something that we are starting. I would love to go to veterans groups. Even more than that, I would love to find a way to get them to us so that they get out of the house, they can come be a part of us, that they find that there's, you know, a place that where they can come and talk to our budtenders, and they become really friendly with them, and they share their stories, and it's very cool. It's not, they, it takes them out of their norm, right? If we go to the VFW, sometimes people just zone out, or they do this. But if you bring them into our store, it's very cool. Like, they're like, wow, what is all of this? We can answer any questions with them. They get to know our budtenders. Some of them have handshakes with our budtenders. Like, it's very cool. So it's something else they get to be a part of, makes them feel young, makes them feel relevant, makes them, you know, feel like they're part of a community. So definitely things that I want to get involved with more than what we are now, but it's just because we've literally only been open a little over a year. So it's things that we're still building. Yeah, of course.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Please come forward. Seeing done, can I get a motion to close to the public?
Second.
By Councilman Yurkis, second by Councilman Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Go ahead.
With the holiday season coming along, I was thinking about recycling. Besides paper towel, cardboard rolls, when you, the gift wrap paper, all those large cardboard,